Good afternoon, I'll call to order the board of directors. Study session for Thursday, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. May I have a roll call, please?
Director Meyerhoffen.
Present.
Director Duff.
Here.
Director Martin.
Here.
Vice President Griffith.
Present.
President Sewell.
Here.
Thank you, we have corn.
Seeing we're all here, I'll skip item three. We'll also skip item four and do that on Tuesday. Uh, number five, rules of procedure, councilman?
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the board of directors, all noticed meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a procedural guideline. Directors should refrain from responding directly to public comments at meetings of the board. The president of the board presides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during meetings. The president is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the president. No member of the board should speak more than once upon anyone's subject until every other member of the board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given an opportunity to speak. No board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a board meeting. And then in order to ensure the orderly progress of board meetings, the board president regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item.
Thank you. Item six, public input. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters within the board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the board?
President Sewell, there are no members of the public on Zoom.
Thank you. And item seven, human resources, we'll do Tuesday?
Yes.
Moving on to action items. Item eight, federal advocacy services, Carpe and Clay Incorporated. It is recommended to authorize the interim general manager to execute an agreement for services with Carpe and Clay government relations in the amount of five thousand dollars per month for the term February first, two thousand twenty-four to January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Do we have a staff report?
We do, President Sewell, Marion?
Thank you, interim general manager Macy, and good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Today, we have Laura Morgan Kessler, principal at Carpe and Clay, who has more than twenty years of experience advocating for the public agencies and very on various issues, including water quality and infrastructure. Laura has served the district as our Washington representative for the past five years. Prior to this, she assisted Young and Thane for approximately twelve years in serving MSWD. Through these combined efforts to the district's groundwater quality protection program, we've received significant federal funding as well as a planning authorization in the Water Resources Development Act two thousand and a construction authorization through the two thousand seven WRTA. Due to Laura's direct involvement with the district's congressional delegation, as well as the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the district has received uh, a lot of funding in the last five years. This includes one point two million in the twenty eighteen fiscal year USAC work plan, two hundred fifty thousand in the twenty-two, and eight hundred thousand in the twenty-three fiscal years, energy and water infrastructure bills. Uh, pending Congress's finalization of the twenty twenty-four fiscal year bills, we also anticipate two point seven million in the Senate Energy and Water Appropriations Bill. Laura is here today on Zoom, ready to give you a brief update on the status of Washington DC and answer any questions you may have. Laura?
Thanks so much, Marion, good afternoon, directors. As always, it's a pleasure to be speaking with you today, uh, here from our nation's capital. So as Marion said, I'm going to give you kind of a quick overview um of what has been happening this past year in DC. Talk a little bit about the district's federal advocacy efforts and then what we can expect moving forward. So the district's sustained dedication to federal advocacy has continued to yield successful results. Just in the past five years, these efforts have helped secure two point two five million dollars for the Army Corps for the construction of our subject sewer conversion project. Additionally, we currently have another two point seven million in funding uh that is pending in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Energy and Water Bill. And this was secured by Senator Padilla and the late Senator Feinstein. So this community project request, or what we used to call earmarks, once it's finalized, it will represent the largest single-year funding amount that we have been able to secure for the Army Corps for our project. Uh, it has definitely become clear over the years that this project is a priority for both the Army Corps and your senators, which is really a direct testament to the district's continued and sustained advocacy efforts. So taking a quick look back at twenty twenty-three, much of Congress's attention and effort this year has really been focused on trying to move these fiscal year appropriations bills forward. Back in May, Congress and the president negotiated legislation to not only raise the debt limit, but to set spending limits for this fiscal year and the next fiscal fiscal year. So while the Senate chose to work on their bills uh to fund them at the level that was agreed upon in the debt ceiling legislation, the House chose to write their bills to a lower level. And so the difference we have between the House bills and the Senate bills is about a hundred and thirteen billion dollars, so not a small number. Jumping ahead uh to the calendar in twenty twenty-three, the month of October, you may recall, saw quite a flurry of activity back here at the federal level. Uh, starting with on the eleventh hour of the last day of the fiscal year, Congress was able to pass a continuing resolution to keep the government open and funded through November seventeenth. Just three days after Congress passed this continuing resolution, the House held an unprecedented vote and for the first time in history, removed the sitting speaker of the House, Kevin McCarthy. Following the decision to remove Speaker McCarthy, the House Republican Caucus then spent the next twenty-two days trying to elect a new speaker. They went through three different candidates, including the Majority Leader Steve Scalise, the Judiciary Committee Chairman Jim Jordan, and the majority whip Tom Emmer. And unfortunately, none of those candidates were able to secure the votes needed. So finally, on October twenty-fifth, the House Republican Caucus coalesced around a candidate and successfully elected Congressman Mike Johnson of Louisiana to serve as the new speaker. For Californians, October also saw the end of an era with the passing of Senator Diane Feinstein, who served the state of California in the Senate for over three decades. Following her passing, Governor Newsom announced that he would be appointing Laphonza Butler to fulfill the rest of Feinstein's term, which will end at the end of this calendar year. Senator Butler has also announced that she will not be seeking reelection for that full six-year term. Right before the Thanksgiving holiday, Congress passed yet another continuing resolution to keep the government open and funded. The difference with this new CR is it took a slightly different approach in extending funding and did what we called a laddered approach. So four of the twelve appropriations bills that fund the federal government are extended until one date, and the other eight are extended to a second date. So that brings us to today. The first CR, which funds several federal agencies, including both the Army Corps of Engineers and the Bureau of Reclamation, is set to expire on January nineteenth, which is just eight short days from today. Both the House and the Senate returned to DC for this week for the first time since the holidays. And I will tell you, earlier this week, I was uh very hopeful that during my update today, I would be able to share with you Congress's plans to avoid a partial shutdown and to finish the FY twenty-four appropriations bills. Uh, unfortunately, as of uh six oh nine PM Eastern Time, that is not the case. Uh, there is no clear path forward on how Congress is going to pass a CR by next week to avoid a partial shutdown uh or how they're going to finish these FY twenty-four bills. Senate Democrats and Republicans appear to be united in their desire to move a continuing resolution likely till sometime in March. However, on the House side, Speaker Johnson is facing some challenges within his caucus on how best to resolve this issue and move forward. So at least at the moment, the path to passing another CR does seem challenging. As we often see here in DC, um, Congress tends to be able to put these deals together at the very last minute. So I'm continuing to remain optimistic that in the next eight days, we will be able to find a path and avoid a partial shutdown. Looking ahead to this year, as it is an election year for all members of the House, a third of the Senate, and the president, you can expect politics to drive much of the activity from DC in the coming months. Both parties are going to be looking for opportunities to best position their members for the November election. On the administration side, we expect that rules and regulations will continue to come out at quite a pace over the coming months. As always, I'm going to continue to work to keep you and your staff aware of any proposed rules or regulations that could have an impact on your operations or your customers. Again, I want to thank you for the continued honor of being able to work on your half back here in DC and as always, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Laura. Uh, do we have any discussion or questions from the board? Director Martin?
I have one comment, I don't think it makes any difference in terms of the legal agreement here, but I just want to point it out that in the future, I would like to see the term interim removed from your identification on there. You're no longer the interim general manager, so um, like I said, I don't know if that has any impact on legality of the documents or procedure on there, but I I I think that uh we need to make that change moving forward. That's all I have to say.
Director Duff?
Um, thank you for all of your hard work, very appreciative to have someone like you dedicated to our district out there fighting for us. Um, but could you speak a little bit on the changes that are taking place on your your contract moving forward? I'm noticing an increase um in your monthly amount, and it looks like also an increased increase in the the future cost. Could you kind of speak to the board on the reasons for those increases?
Sure, I can uh speak to the reason for the proposed increase for this year. Um, so I've been working on behalf of the district now since uh two thousand and six, as Marion mentioned. From two thousand and six to twenty eighteen, I was at a previous firm working with a gentleman named uh Thane Young. And then when I left that firm to go to Carpe and Clay, um, I was fortunate enough that the district chose to come with me and I've been representing them for five and a half years at at my new firm, Carpe and Clay. Um, since my beginning of engagement with the district in two thousand and six, our retainer, uh, monthly retainer has remained the same. So through my, I guess, what is that, eighteen years of working, having the pleasure to work on your behalf, have not uh ever proposed an increase. Um, and so given not only what is changing in the economy and inflation um and some other changes and just knowing how long we've been able to to sort of really hold that level um is why I, you know, this year after eighteen years, did propose uh an increase.
Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it. And one other um concern and and not concern, but question. Um, I know that we as a board have casually spoken about needing to get some local uh representation in the state level as well. Are you able to help guide us on that process? Or or would you be able to provide staff with recommendations on how we can move forward in a economically feasible way to get better representation here locally as well?
Yeah, so I'd be more than happy to have conversations with your staff about, you know, possible recommendations for some folks that I know who do really good work um on the state level. Uh, it's unfortunately not a service that that my firm does provide, but because of the work I do in California, I I do news, I do know some folks um who do a lot on the state level, so I'd be happy to to provide some recommendations to your staff.
Thank you so much, and thank you again for providing those clarifications. Sure.
Director Griffin?
Vice President Griffin. Whatever. Wasn't it doctor a couple? Hi Laura, um, I don't have any questions, I just want to make a comment so that there's uh and yeah, I saw that the rate went up, no, to me, no big deal. Uh, I calculate over five years, we've paid two hundred and forty thousand dollars for services. And based on over the five years, just what's here, we've received four million nine hundred fifty thousand dollars in benefit. That's twenty times your investment, and so I think uh, you know, if that was a retirement account, I'd be really, really happy to get that kind of return. Um, so for me, this is, this is a no-brainer, even with an increase. It's still quite a great return and having met Laura and having worked with her and seen uh how she interacts with members of Congress, not just while we're in the halls, but at restaurants. Um, um, we, seriously, we we are very, very fortunate to have you. And so um, I don't have any questions, I just have nothing but accolades. So thank you so much for all your hard work, we really appreciate it. And to the rest of the board, this really is a no-brainer, so that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you very much.
And I'll just echo Vice President Griffin's statement, um, I think you've been a big part of our ground order protection program and um, I'm ready to hear a motion. We have.
No, Monday.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Tuesday.
Yep.
I'm new at this.
Can't make it that easy for the girl.
So any further discussion for item number eight? Thank you very much, Laura.
Thank you.
Moving on, item nine, acknowledge MSWD legislative platform for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. It is recommended to receive and file the MSWD twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five legislative platform. Yeah.
Thank you again uh for giving me some time on your agenda today. Um, agencies like Mission Springs Water District typically adopt a legislative guide to help that our staff uh and our administration advocacy efforts at the agency level, both at the local, the state, and the national levels of government. Next slide, please, Karen. The platform will guide the general manager and our staff and our lobbyists so that the timely action can be taken consistent with the principles outlined in this document. I want to note that there way may be issues that arise that are not addressed in this platform or on or in which that the board may change its position. Throughout the year, it is our intention that the board may uh take additional steps to direct staff to oppose or support specific policy initiatives as they arise. Um, I've taken and created this document and we've broken it into ten core areas. Um, I'll go through those areas quite quickly right now, um, but they are pretty generic. So let's go through the first one is maintain local control of water resources and resist additional burdens that may hinder district operations and affordability. This is very straightforward, we've been efficiently managing our water resources for the past seventy years. As such, we would strongly oppose or for any proposed legislation that would in any way reduce local control or keep us from affordably managing our resources. Number two is protect MSWD's ability to operate day-to-day business functions efficiently. Any legislation that impede our ability to maintain day-to-day business operations, including employment matters, building codes, public agency contracting, um, will closely be monitored and would be generally opposed. Number three, protect MSWD's groundwater supplies. Advocacy efforts will focus on groundwater sustainability both now and into the future, and we will support actions that preserve or increase the water availability to MSWD and its customers. Number four, support and potentially sponsor efforts to amend state compliance periods for new water quality standards, including monitoring new regulations for various contaminants. Generally, when a new uh MCL is adopted by the California State Water Resource Control Board, agencies like ours uh are mandated to start compliance monitoring within six months. This uh, the start date sometimes uh does not give water agencies sufficient time to comply with the new regulations and thereby uh placing agency in a position of non-compliance and triggering a series of consequences to that agency. We would support an approach that more closely follows the federal EPA model that provides up to five years for compliance. This has been a topic that's been discussed with some of the water agencies um here in the valley, especially as it relates to the implementation of the proposed Chrome Six regulations. Number four, support federal legislation to remove the taxation requirement for conservation rebates issued by the district. Uh, the IRS classifies water conservation rebates, like our toilet or our turf rebates, as taxable income. Completing taxable tax forms and explaining this process to customers is lengthy and burdensome, and it provides a disincentive to some of the customers from participating. We will support legislation that would amend the tax code and lessen the burden for customers in this area. Number six, continue to engage with the state Water Resource Control Board to influence how making conservation a way of life uh policies are implemented. While the Water Board has stated that they do not want to unfairly burden disadvantaged communities such as ours, we know that this rulemaking will unfairly impact our residents. Therefore, MSWD will continue to engage the rulemaking process and remain focused on how the state board moves to further regular regulate outdoor and indoor urban water use efficiency. Number seven, we'd strongly support uh liability exemption for water and wastewater agencies regarding the designation of PFAS as a hazardous substance. There are efforts at both the state and the federal level right now to regulate this class of chemicals. We will support legislation efforts to create an exemption for passive receivers such as water districts or wastewater utilities like ourselves. Number eight, continue to oppose a water tax or a fee and monitor how the state and federal government will address water affordability through programs like LIWAP um or other legislative actions. While we continue to support water affordability programs, the district opposes a water tax or any type of program that's administratively burdensome um to implement or ones that would make it hard for us to operate. Number nine, seek external funding for new facilities or for improvements, uh facility improvements in infrastructure. As we all know, aging infrastructure is an important issue for districts across the state. MSWD will continue to engage with lawmakers to make available grants and fund matching opportunities to promote capital investment and infrastructure improvements to ensure our reliable service. And lastly, number ten, support and potentially sponsor efforts to streamline federal and state loan and grant processes and policies to reduce delays and remove barriers. We will continue to identify and support opportunities to expedite and expand the development and execution of these funding programs and to remove barriers to their usefulness. As we have witnessed with our state regional, uh our our state grant for the regional plant, we believe there are opportunities to streamline these processes and improve the efficiency of them. My current. Now, these are the core directives of the legislative platform. We don't know what will take place this next year and what things may come our way, but this gives us the guiding principles so that we as staff um can follow this um and then include to have additional dialogue with dialogue with the board. Um, it is really our intent that we will continue to interact with you and then we will ensure that the Aviski needs of the district are met. I would like now like to turn it back to Director Sewell for any questions or comments, thank you.
Um, Director Duff?
I just want to say what great proactive work this is. I'm very impressed with this draft. I also wanted to compliment staff on the fact that this has followed what we have all discussed as a board with staff on our strategic plan, and it has followed it beautifully. So I just can't, I am very, very proud of this document, I'm proud of the work staff has put into it, and I am very grateful for it. Thank you.
Vice President Griffin?
Oh, goodness, okay. Just a question, have we ever done one of these before?
I did create one last year, but was never brought to the board for receive and file. And given the fact that we're going to be more active this year, we've been really enhancing our governmental relations. I thought it was prior, it was, it was time for us to bring this and have a discussion and open.
And but prior to last year, we've ever had?
Not that I'm aware of, there may have been a few years ago, but not since I've been.
Um, I, you know, I, I started going through this and I hit this and I saw this and I was like, wow, I'm kind of blown away. Um, this is fantastic work, and I know that we have talked about some of these things um kind of offline, but uh I'm really impressed and I, it really speaks to um your work and your contributions, and uh I'm very proud to work with you because this, this speaks volumes to me. And I think if the public takes a look at this, they'll understand exactly what we're going to be doing and where we're going. So thank you for this, I really appreciate it.
Director Martin?
Ditto.
Director Meyerhoffen?
Hey, I just have a question, you said the last one you did kind of got put in the file?
It wasn't that it was in a file, we just didn't bring it out to the board and present it in such a manner.
Okay, so and then so the public never really saw it either?
It was in our um general manager's report, so I don't know that the public actually took time to dig down.
How will you, how will you handle this one in that manner?
Well, this is a guiding document for staff, so it's not necessarily something we would publish. Um, but we can definitely make it available, I can also do a presentation uh possibly during one of our water talks or go to the city council meeting and and let people know that it's here.
I, that would be a good idea, yes, thank you.
And I think it's a great work and will be a good resource for all of the staff, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I missed this on the last item, but do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item?
Still no members of the public on Zoom.
And uh while we're at it, thank you to Director McKenna from Desert Water Agency for attending. If there's any items, let us know that you wish to speak on. Item ten, resolutions twenty twenty-four dash zero one, twenty twenty-four dash zero four, and twenty twenty-four dash zero five, revised fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, operating and capital budget appropriations limit and classification plan. It is recommended to adopt resolutions two thousand twenty-one dash zero one, two thousand twenty-four dash zero four, and two thousand twenty-four dash zero five related to the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, revised operating and capital budgets. Staff?
Uh, thank you, President Sewell, our director of finance, Arturo Sehala will give the presentation and.
Thank you, General Manager Macy, President Sewell, and members of the board. Uh, today, I'm going to present a summarized uh version of the information presented on Thursday at the workshop, uh primarily for any additional questions or input that you may have. Um, I do want to point out that the report that you have for the study session is not correct. Um, a couple of things were corrected after that were sent for the workshop. The workshop numbers are correct, and we've also corrected the ones for Monday in terms of the uh information in the packet. And the presentation as well uh does contain those corrections and um too. So just again, summarized uh version of the operating items that were presented. Uh, we have a contracts analyst position that we're adding for half of the year. Uh, construction and maintenance is requesting fifty thousand dollars for the asphalt um mix, wastewater seventy-five thousand, public affairs, two hundred and five thousand, engineering, nine hundred and eighty-four thousand. Uh, primarily the two items in there is the SEP, the supplemental environmental uh project, and the two uh water and sewer master plan uh items that we need to do an adjustment for. Um, and those amounts that do get capitalized into the capital projects of two hundred and seven thousand. Uh, non-operating uh revenue, we're adding three million dollars for that uh those projects. Um, and finally, the capital and capital improvements, uh two projects being uh requested for augmentation, a hundred and forty-one thousand. The Energy Conservation and Efficiency Plan, fifty thousand, and the Hillary Storm Projects combined one point one uh five million dollars. Um, with that, uh just in presenting the information for the uh December thirty-one financial information, you can see one of the main reasons why we left pretty much everything the same in terms of everything else with revenues and expenses. Uh, with revenue being uh in budget with roughly over forty-one thousand. And those are those items that we can add budget for that come in uh whenever we have, you know, additions to uh hookups uh for water and sewer and so forth. Uh, expenses, again, those are trailing, uh but we, that is expected and it's normal this time of the year. Um, as you can see from last year as well. Uh, and again, the non-operating item, it is larger than in previous years and then budget for that three million dollars. So this is primarily a correction that you'll see that in the next month, uh once we add those items, if the board so chooses. Um, real quick with cash summarizing again, uh looking at uh current December to last year's uh twenty twenty-two of thirty-six million, thirty-six point nine to forty-seven point six million dollars, uh primarily because we still have that uh fifteen million dollar loan with Wells Fargo for the regional plant. We have asked uh the uh consultants to provide an update today on some of that uh grant information, so be on the lookout for that. Summarizing the uh final budgets from last year to this year, you see a difference from forty-four million to seventy-three million and pretty much correlating one hundred percent. You see that that's the grant related. That is a very important number for us, as it is for the board. Um, and we have uh, we keep it in the in the forefront of when we're doing everything, not only for the current grant, but also as we've been listening to the uh recommendations to continue, go after any additional grants that we can find. Um, so we are putting a lot of effort into that, but that is primarily where this final number comes from is that grant number. Everything else is pretty much evening to zero, which means uh expenses are within the revenue that's coming in. Uh, but it is a very important number to look at. And uh finally, the capital improvement projects. Uh, just a summarized version again, looking at the highlighting the items that are changing, requested for change, the well forty-two, the uh supplemental environmental project, the uh muffin monster, the uh, and then finally, the Hillary uh items in the energy conservation and efficiency plan. Uh, and with that, I will open it for any questions you may have.
Uh, Director Martin?
The muffin monster not related to the cookie monster, right? No, I have.
Director Meyerhoffen?
Yes. Uh, the property tax. I was under the impression that we were a nonprofit organization, didn't have to pay property tax.
Correct.
So, what is two million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred dollars?
That's revenue. That is the revenue that we collect on uh the property taxes for that one percent as being a government agency. So we do collect uh for the district. As being a government agency, so we do collect for the district.
We, who do we collect that from?
It's the one percent of homeowners.
Oh, for homeowners.
Yeah, for being the.
Makes better sense to me now.
It's revenue. It's not, we're spending it.
So property taxes are okay. All right. Now, thank you very much, Joe. Thank you for all your. Mind-boggling work you must go through every day.
My pleasure.
Director De.
Thank you for your hard work as, as always and I want to. I want to thank you also for keeping the grant numbers so clear for all of us and for our public. This is something that is extremely concerning. This is deja vu of a year ago this time for me and. For most of us here in this room. Keeping that in the forefront for us as a board too, we need to remember these numbers when we are out talking to people because. If we can't get timely reimbursement of this, it's going to start presenting a problem. And you were able to kind of give us a timeline on that before. Could you? Give us a similar timeline as to when we're going to be in trouble at, at the pace we're going.
I, I did present that in the workshop. There, there's a number in there. Because of the timeliness of the expenses for the regional plan. They were not coming in as fast as we thought. We are in a better shape looking outward to the end of the year. However, I will be presenting a little bit more detail in the long range financial plan. We are putting that together and that's going to encompass. A five-year plan, but I can bring it for you next month as well.
Great. And then the only other thing, in, in last month's board meeting, we had discussed. The costs and I know that our master financial plan is reviewing that. I would be correct in stating that this is most likely going to change again as far as what we anticipate. In our collections, once those changes are enacted, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Vice President Griffin.
Good job. No question.
And I have no further questions, but thank you for all your hard work and I appreciated us having the workshop, giving us a little more time to digest everything. So.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Item eleven, resolution two thousand twenty four dash zero two. Amending resolution two thousand twenty three dash sixteen revisions to Mission Springs Water District Personnel Rules and Regulations. It is recommended to adopt resolution two thousand twenty four dash zero two, providing for the revisions to Mission Springs Water District Personnel Rules and Regulations.
Thank you, President Sewell. I will allow Oriana to go through this item. Oriana?
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Today we bring to you updates to our employee handbook that are based on recent changes to the law. Allow me to share my screen for a minute. Are you able to see this screen?
Yes.
Thank you. The employee handbook, as you know, provides guidance and information related to the district's policies and procedures. And benefits in a written format. These changes to the employee handbook were made in collaboration with district council. There are two changes to our sick leave policy. And a new policy has been written to be compliant with Senate Bill A forty eight. Providing employees reproductive-related loss leave of absence. These changes are attached as exhibit A, also currently on display. Are there any questions?
No, thank you.
In addition, as a state and or federal laws frequently change. To the extent that such changes in law affect personnel policies. The district must be able to timely modify its personnel rules and regulations. Sometimes changes to the law are effective immediately or even retroactive. And to more timely comply, resolution twenty twenty four dash O two. Authorizes future amendments to the personnel rules and regulations at the administrative level. As needed to comply with changes in a state or federal law. When changes are made administratively to the personnel rules and regulations, staff of course will continue to report such changes to the board. At the next available board meeting to ensure that the board remains informed and up to date. Is there any questions I can answer?
Yeah, I, I just have a comment. So. An employee wanting to use sick days to care for. A designated person doesn't have to say what the care is, what the circumstances are. Just in general saying, I'd like to use these for caring for a designated person. Is that correct?
Other than identifying who the designated person is, because they can do so every twelve months or so. They do not have to provide, I don't believe, proof of what is needed. At this time.
Okay, thank you.
And are we only reviewing the section on the screen or are we reviewing the twenty seven point D at the same time?
I have it ready for you to review. It's a lengthy one.
There's just one typo that I thought I would.
Oh, perfect.
On line two, where it says multiple day even, you mean event, correct?
Events, of multiple day events of any of the following.
So it just says even. So it should say events or event.
I will absolutely update that.
That was the only thing I saw. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't think we have any more questions on this.
Yep. I, I, again, good job and anyone who doesn't understand. Labor law or doesn't pay attention, doesn't realize that every year new laws come out and California is notorious for them and. Oriana and I have to discuss some of these. So it makes a lot of work. For our HR department and I applaud your hard work on this. So thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
And again, missed the last item, but just to double check, Dory, no members of the public have joined?
Correct, President Sewell.
Right, thank you. Moving on to item twelve. Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero three rescinding and replacing resolution two thousand nine dash zero two. Expense reimbursement policy is recommended to adopt resolution two thousand twenty four dash zero three. Rescinding and replacing resolution two thousand nine dash zero two reimbursement policy.
Thank you, President Sewell. I asked district council to take this item. They were instrumental in putting this together.
Yes, members of the board. This item comes to you really as an update to the district's stipend and expense reimbursement policy. The current policy was adopted in two thousand nine. And by resolution two thousand nine dash O two and this resolution that's before you that you'll vote on on Tuesday. Which is resolution twenty twenty four dash O three. Will update and replace your existing policy and I, I would really categorize this as sort of a housekeeping item, just cleaning up the policy and tightening it up. So just to summarize. What the changes are from the existing policy. The primary changes are removing a specific reference to board compensation. Which I'll go over in a second and then add up, adding some clarifying languages, language to sections B one and D. And the objective of those changes is to avoid situations where a board member. Might get double reimbursed for expenses if they were going to a board meeting of another agency. And that agency was reimbursing them for their expenses or compensating them. There wouldn't be any double compensation. Or double reimbursement of expenses. You should have a redline version of the document in your packet. If you turn to page sixty two. Of your packet, you can actually see. The changes actually start on page fifty nine. And that's just, we added some whereas. It was giving the history. Of the policy and what's, and, and how it's being changed. And then on page sixty two in your packet. We have the first substantive change. And if you have that at section V at the top of the page on page sixty two. That deals with service stipends. And previously, you'll see where we struck out the, the words one hundred dollars per day. And we replaced it with compensation. The reason we did that is you just recently adopted an ordinance. You had two hearings on it. And that's going into effect, I believe, in March. That sets forth what your compensation is per meeting. And so we don't need the redundancy here. And redundancy in documents sometimes creates confusion. So we eliminated that and just used the word compensation. And then below that. We clarified on expenses, we added air travel mileage that wasn't in there before. But obviously that's something that people would be reimbursed for if you had to fly somewhere on district business. Or other had mileage expenses, you would be reimbursed for that. And then we added the, the provision at the end of that paragraph that says, notwithstanding anything herein to the contrary. Mission Springs Water District Board members are not requested, authorized or designated by the Mission Springs Board to be compensated. And shall not be compensated for attending the meetings of another entity organization. Where the other entity organization compensates them for attending the meeting. So. It's pretty self-explanatory. You don't get compensated twice. And then if you turn to page sixty four in your packet. Section D, D deals with personal expenses. That will not be reimbursed and we added the following language. Notwithstanding anything herein to the contrary, MSWD board members are not requested, authorized or designated to be reimbursed and shall not be reimbursed for expenses. For example, mileage, air travel, meals, lodging. Or other expenses that would normally be considered reimbursable by Mission Springs. Related to attending the meeting of another entity organization that is reimbursing the MSWD board member for the same expenses. And then if you turn to page sixty five in your packet. We, in the existing policy, we had some links to websites that set forth. The air travel reimbursement rates, et cetera, some travel reimbursement rates. And those websites are no longer any good. So we just updated those with working websites. And then, let's see. And that's it. Those are the only changes.
Any questions or discussion? Director Martin? Director Mya.
I, I believe that the. Being paid from two organizations, if I remember correctly, was mentioned in our ethics training, maybe. World thirty four. I was embarrassed. So anyways, no, no further questions. Thank you.
Director De.
I only have one, since it's housekeeping, one concern. And I don't know if it applies exactly here or not, but given that we just. Did an update to the compensation for the board members. If the other entity is reimbursing less than. Should that individual still be allowed to bill MSWD for the difference?
What I would do is I'd pick one or the other. If I were a board member. I would either submit my expense reimbursement to the Mission Springs. Agency or I would submit it to the other agency. Pick one or the other and the same with compensation. I would just pick one or the other, but I wouldn't. I wouldn't get into splitting it, nor would I get into. You know, trying to get compensated or reimbursed twice. So, for example. If attending another board meeting only compensates you, you know, at half of what Mission Springs does. Well, if it's on the list, the affiliated list, and you're approved to get compensated for that, then you can submit it to Mission Springs.
And not submit it to the other organization.
You just can't do it twice.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Vice President Griffin. And nothing further. So thank you very much. Item thirteen, Dory, again, no members of the public.
There is somebody in the meeting, the, the name is just one.
One, would you like to comment on item twelve? Okay, moving on. Item thirteen, authorized general manager employment agreement. Is it recommended to, it is recommended to authorize the board president to execute a general manager's employment agreement. Between Mission Springs Water District and Brian Macy.
I'm going to recuse myself from this item since I'm part of it. JP will take it from here.
So the item that you have before you is the general manager chief engineer employment agreement between Mission Springs and Brian Macy. The agreement would become effective February eighth of two thousand twenty four. And it would continue for a three-year term through February eighth of two thousand twenty seven. The compensation will be at the rate of two hundred and thirty eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety two dollars annually. And then there are merit increases for acceptable performance. That would be granted after a written evaluation and they would be capped at five percent. In addition to any cost of living expenses. And if you turn to page seventy three in your packet. That's the agreement that's before you that you're going to be voting on on Tuesday. And the first thing you'll note in the agreement is previously or in the existing agreement. With Mr. Macy, it says interim general manager. And so that term is being removed. It no longer be the interim general manager. You'll be the general manager and chief engineer. Then, as I mentioned before, in Article one, which deals with the term. It states that it commences, it's a three-year term. It commenced on February eighth, two thousand twenty four and it ends on February eighth of two thousand twenty seven. It also states at the end of that article. That notwithstanding anything herein to the contrary, it is understood and agreed by the parties and. That the employee holds the position of general manager at the pleasure of the district's board of directors. Article two deals with salary and the salary is unchanged from his current salary. There's no change there. Article two B. Deals with advancement in salary and it provides that. The employee's salary shall be eligible for a merit and or cost of living increase on each annual anniversary date. I.e. February eighth. So the first time that he would be eligible, it'd be February eighth, two thousand twenty five. A year from the commencement date. Merit increases shall be granted only as a result of a written evaluation of continued meritorious service. And with a continued improvement. By the employee and the effective performance of the duties of the position held, merit increases for acceptable performance. Shall be no more than five percent in addition to any cost of living increase. If you turn to page seventy four. It deals with, it just clarifies in Article seven, this is an at-will position at the pleasure of the board. Article. Article seven, section C, which is on page seventy five. Deals with severance. If the board were to decide at some point to go in a different direction, the severance would be one year. We looked at other agencies in the area. For example, Desert Water Agency is eighteen months. This would be a twelve-month period. And then on page seventy six, Article eight C. Which is titled four oh one A retirement. And that's, that's a new provision. That says, subject to any limitations imposed by law, district shall make a contribution to the employee's four oh one A retirement savings amount. Or account of four hundred dollars per day. And then Article AE automobile allowance that remains unchanged, same as it currently is. And I believe those are the changes and those were negotiated by. Representatives of the board meeting with the, with Mr. Macy.
Do we have any discussion or questions? Director De. Vice President Griffin.
The four oh one A. Is, is that a match or is that just a contribution?
It's just a contribution. It's not a match.
Director Martin?
Nope, nothing.
Director Mya. And I have no further comment.
Well, and I, I want to be clear that. You know, typically the way these are negotiated is you select your representatives to then meet with the employee, negotiate, and that's the process that you went through. There hasn't been any approval of this agreement yet. That'll take place in an open session on Tuesday.
And I guess if there's any concerns or to let me know over the weekend for any changes. But if not, this will be as is on Tuesday. Moving on to item fourteen. And do we have any public comment on item thirteen, general manager employment agreement?
One, do you care to make comment? No, President Sewell.
Item fourteen, third amendment to contract with Renew Clark Architects for the design of the Critical Services Center Administration Building. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to amend the professional service contract with Renew Clark Architects. For the design of the Critical Services Center Administration Building at the district corporate yard. The amendment would increase. The amendment would increase the contract amount three hundred and sixty-four thousand from one million eight hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and sixty-four to a not-to-exceed amount of two million two hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-four, and authorize the general manager to do all things necessary to complete the project.
Thank you, President Sewell. I will ask our consultant, Alvin Flores, to give this presentation.
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell, members of the board, and the district staff. For our last discussion regarding this item, in order to to move forward and authorize the design, we were asked to provide a little bit more detail in terms of a contract amendment. So I believe that was passed to the board for their review earlier, and just to quickly go over the, the overall intent was to site adapt the current design that we have for the Critical Services Center to a new site. And during our discussions in terms of the overall design and our own internal discussions on basically the the level of effort it would take, we were able to, able to identify the architectural, the civil landscape, and electrical ramifications of that site adaptation, and we have brought forward that that fee for the board review. I also do have another update presentation regarding a timeline. So I believe that's a further down agenda item. So in this case, we can discuss any questions you have on the fee.
Actually, for clarification, can you give it that, can you give that presentation now?
Sure.
I know it could have gone here, and it could have gone for the update, but I think it gives context to where the project's at and the next steps.
Understood. So yes, one second while I bring that up. And everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So as I mentioned earlier, one of the other questions was timeline. So we're looking at if the amendment gets approved this month, and we begin to sign, that it'll take us to about spring to provide a design review. So that will be a intermediate milestone where we'll do a quick check-in with district staff, with the board, show our progress. And from there, we'll be able to finalize the bidding documents. So at this point, we're looking at April for that to be completed. And then from there, going into the summer and fall of this year, some of the other items that we'll be looking to achieve is city approval, establishing the bid opening date, and then into construction. And looking at a construction completion of fall or winter twenty twenty-five. And so this is the very high-level timeline and some of the major milestones. While we're working on this and the redesign, there are a handful of other concurrent milestone activities that we would also be looking at. One of them is a sequel amendment, very similar to what we were looking to aim for at the other site. In this case, we'll, we'll do the same there and do any research necessary for the environmental conditions. There will also need to be a lot line adjustment for the site since the buildings and improvements will span across certain property lines. There's also a gas, an existing gas depot that will have to be relocated or at the minimum removed from the site so we can do the new work. And then also, once the drawings are complete enough, we can start reviewing those with the city and achieve whatever approvals are necessary regarding that. And then finally advertise bid and go into construction. So if there's any other questions or comments regarding either the contract amendment fees or the overall timelines?
Right. Director Martin, any questions?
Nope.
Director Meyerhoffen?
Yes, I have some. So you're taking the plans that were already done, and you're doing what exactly to make them fit? Here in Horton Plant?
Correct. So the idea is we'll, we'll have to site adapt. So take the buildings. And that is for our original discussions, the buildings themselves, we are doing our best to maintain the overall design intent. There will have to be some changes in terms of rotating, mirroring, and some slight adjustments, just because it is a different site. So and then in terms of the site itself, everything for the site will be redesigned. It is a new site. So what goes on in the building related to this amendment, we're doing our best to keep it to a minimum. We don't want to redesign everything. But again, because it's a new site, all the site work will have to be redesigned. We'll, we'll do our best to keep the same critical elements that were discussed, since we did have good discussions with facilities and have a good understanding of their needs. It'll be a good opportunity to reevaluate those. But what you're seeing here on these diagrams that we've been discussing are the big elements that have already been agreed upon.
What I'm, we'd really like to see is a plot plan to scale. So we know exactly where everything is going, how big our garden is going to be here, how big of a building can actually fit here, what kind of future growth, room for future growth, if any, that we'll have. So to say, here you go, here, spend all this money, but find out that things just may not fit in this location correctly, it doesn't sit well with me. So I would really like to, and it's up to the board too, even though we haven't voted on a, this site as a whole, apparently this is where it's going. I, I would like to see a plot plan to scale to see how big a building, what, what you're really looking at, where you're going with the rest of the project. Before we go any further with it, with much more spending, I don't know how much it would, that part of it would cost. I would imagine that most of that would be done already. That's, that's where I'm at, before we start spending a whole lot of money, okaying a whole lot of money, to see how it's all going to fit in there.
And the previous presentations that we provided, we had multiple site options that we provided, and these are to scale at a very high level. We're, we're not looking at drawing every parking stall at this point, but when it comes to the buildings, a certain amount of parking, a certain amount of the demonstration garden, those elements have been sized, and they will fit, because we understand that concern. I mean, we, we don't want, one of the first parts of the feasibility study that we did was to make sure that all the major program elements that the district wanted at the previous site would fit here. And the buildings themselves, as they were originally designed, do fit. The site elements, a lot of those elements would end up having to be reduced. But again, there, there was enough of, for instance, with parking, you're, you're losing a substantial amount of new parking, but the intent was that there is an existing parking lot that serves the park that would help supplement as needed. It wouldn't be used on an everyday basis, so we still have enough parking to service the staff, but for those larger events or if that need ever arose, there's the ability to use that as overflow, along with we could also build in some additional overflow and or expansion areas if needed.
Oh, the building's going to stay the same size?
Correct.
Okay. So you're taking the existing plans over at the Two Bunch Palm site. And the only thing you're going to have to do with those plans is perhaps the way the pudding is?
It will depend on the site, this site's soil condition. So we'll do that exploration, but, but to a degree, anything that does touch dirt, for instance, you know, that will end up having to be reevaluated. The hope being that it will be very similar in design since we do have safety factors built in. But that would end up having to be reevaluated. So what we are working toward is all the programmatic elements sizing, you know, the number of offices, the size of those offices. You know, some of the major program elements, like the boardroom, again, those elements are still intact, and we'll be able to move forward with. And then the, the adaptation is making sure that, you know, the orientation, where it sits, and items like that, like the foundation and or path of travel accessibility, all of that also works on the site. So all of that will have to be reevaluated and redesigned.
We, we spent two million dollars on those original plans? Well, over two million.
Actually, it was less. About a million.
All right. So how do we arrive at spending another two? We could be, end up spending another over two million dollars.
I believe the item in front of you is only for three hundred sixty-four thousand dollars.
But I, I believe, didn't I see somewhere that it could go up to that amount?
Yes, that is for, that is for construction-related activities.
So how, if we don't know exactly what has to be done with the building, how do we get to that construction part? It's the general estimate is what you're telling me here?
No, so you have the design side, and then you have, when we go to construction, we'll have a construction manager help us through that process. Their, their quote, their original quote, had both the design services and construction as well. So it's two different parts. That's why of the original one point eight that has been budgeted for this, if you will, or been under contract, only a million of it got spent because the the design side was only the first half of the contract, or just over half.
So.
So we're asking for three hundred and sixty-four to move the buildings, to reorientate them, and then redo the entire site, because they've never touched this site before.
Thank you.
And also, Director Meyerhoffen, on page one oh one of our packet, they have a little bit more information than what's shown on the slide as far as scale and size, square footage and things, if you'd like to look. Director Duff, do you have any questions or comments?
You. I don't know if this is for Mr. Flores, or if this is for our staff, but in looking at the attachment number one, page eighty-two, where you discussed and listed out the exclusions that were the district's responsibility. One of them included the environmental studies, noise, flood, sequo, drainage, as well as hazardous materials testing. So I have two parts to my concerns or questions. One, how many of these excluded items that are our responsibilities have we or can we do prior? Have we ensured that the environmental studies, we are not going to run into those? I know we talked about it, but do, can we do these things at the same time or before the check is written to the architects to ensure that we aren't having them do that work? And then one of these other exclusions stops us from proceeding?
So, so we are not asking to move forward to construction. We're just asking for the additional funds to move that forward. So this is the appropriate time to start looking at the environmental and things of that nature. So the last environmental we did for Two Bunch Palms, it took about a hundred and twenty days, and it cost about thirty thousand dollars. We'd expect that to be the same here. At that particular location, we were doing a sequel amendment. As Alvin said, we're also doing a sequel amendment at this location too, or here as well. As far as the hazardous materials and things of that nature, we've actually been able to provide that since the request came through, only because we are required by law to, basically, we have a lot of, basically, it's just oil, diesel, and gasoline and things like that. Ray, we're supposed to track that and have emergency spill prevention plans. We do all of that. Those are the only items that are at that facility. So a lot of these things we can do concurrently.
Okay.
And then before we go to bid, we'll have all of this done. We'll have the city's review, so we know exactly what we're bidding and what we can move forward.
But there's no way for us to do these before we sign the approval on the three hundred and sixty-four thousand. My, I guess my concern is, I'm concerned that the hundred and twenty days it may take for a couple of these studies to be done could potentially repeat what happened to us at Two Bunch and say this, this property is no longer available to us to use for this purpose.
Absolutely. We could do these items before we.
I don't want to stall the progress, but I'm also concerned about repeating the previous mistakes, so to speak. So.
To, the, the board asked us to involve our environmentalists and walk the site beforehand, knowing that this is already a disturbed site, that was, the other site was undisturbed, and it was an overlay, things of that nature. We verified that this site, we can do what we're asking to do. We actually talked to the city almost two years ago at this point about this particular site and what would be required. So basically, it would be rehashing some decisions and some responses we've already gotten. However, if you would like us to go through this, we can.
I mean, I know it's up to the whole board. I'm just, I want to make sure that we don't end up repeating the same problem we had, because that is something I don't want to look at my.
Staff shares that same sentiment as well.
And then with that, my second portion of that concern goes to the gas depot relocation and removal that he is showing here. You had mentioned it, it's been mentioned, but I didn't give it as much thought as seeing it written here gave me. When a gas station goes defunct, the removal process of all of that is extremely costly and time-consuming. Do we have ideas on what that's going to cost us and what's involved?
So the, so the gas depot that he shows on his drawing is our gasoline facility. It's all above ground. There's no underground tanks or nothing like that. When we built that there, we kept everything above ground because we knew it was, could have been temporary, because we were looking to go somewhere else. So that is, that is our facility. The facility that is mentioned here in the next steps is the natural gas, one where the trash, the school buses, and all the other county and other facilities actually use to get their natural gas. When we negotiated that lease, and I want to thank Danny Friend for that negotiation, he made sure that we had a six-month out. So what we would start doing, if this was approved and we decided to move forward, we would then trigger that night or six-month out and start working with them to either try to relocate it farther down Park Lane, or just basically get rid of it off of our property. So two different issues, but yes, ours is above ground and no underground issues that you would normally see in a gas station removal.
Okay. Thank you. That definitely alleviates that part of my stomach ache, but I guess if maybe staff could give us an idea before Monday of how many of these items we could potentially check off the, the list right away, and what might be involved in that to do it concurrently, or potentially at least get some sort of sign-off maybe from, readdress it with the city and just get a sign-off that the, the new management there is still on board with us in what they said two years ago. Just, I want to make sure that we are not putting any carts before the horse, that we are checking, you know, we're going along the right path, checking again, before we sign the check.
We, 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 excuse me, we will reach out to the city between now and Monday and at least have the dialogue with them. I know one of the things that impacts both them and us from looking at this is the way the storm water goes through that particular site, and now we have two buildings blocking that storm path that could go through our site and then go onto the park. But there are other provisions to actually take it going down Park Lane, and that's actually where it's been going. But it still does seem to show up in our property at the back end before it goes into the park, and the park does have a detention pond there that they're working on. So that would be the one issue that I'd want to work with the city to see what their thoughts are, because also the housing development that's proposed to the north, I've never seen what that proposal was and how they were going to handle their storm water as well. So we will reach out to the city and see if we can work through at least that issue and get other impacts. I know the other impact that we want to talk about is the, the light that's at the intersection of Palm and Park. We have been told over and over again that that is something that the city is, is already received funds for and won't be a part of requirement for this particular one. But there are some other things in there, as the noise and other things that we have to look at. We believe that we'll get an exemption for all that, because we're already doing those activities there. But we, we feel that we're in the right spot, that we can build on this site, and there's no overlays or cricket issues that we'll have that we had on the other site. However, we'll, we'll follow up with some agencies and see if we can get better confirmation from that. And if.
That would help me. That would help me feel better about moving forward, because seeing these exclusions and seeing the repeat of some of them from what ended us in this position in the first place, I'm just like, wait a second, if these are things that the architect isn't taking care of as part of that three hundred and sixty-four thousand, then we should make sure that we can go forward with that three hundred and sixty-four thousand here and not be asked to do it again at a different location in the future. Thank you very much.
Vice President Griffin?
I'll come back. So a couple of things just to maybe help. It is already disturbed, so I don't think it's going to be a big deal. It is a disturbed site. Permit plan check, that's stuff we have to do anyway, no matter what we do, so it's not contingent on just this site. As far as the hazardous materials, we know what hazardous materials are there. So for me, it's, it, it seems like it's pretty good. I did want to say, it's my understanding that in terms of stormwater, that Riverside County is also supposed to be working down there on the Verbina plain side, which might actually alleviate any of the concerns regarding stormwater, because they do have a proposed project, which will be just to the east, I believe, of the proposed housing development, if I'm not mistaken.
Actually, I think it's, it, it picks it up farther north and takes. Actually, I think it's it it picks it up farther north and takes it even farther east than Verbina.
Okay.
In this location.
So I think that would alleviate that. So um, just to kind of touch on that. So I think I think we'll be okay. Um, that's the.
And um, thank you for the the questions and comments so far. I think um, I was under the impression also there was disturbed site, so it shouldn't be as many restrictions as say we've seen at the Two Bunch um, site. And just my comment is I'm definitely glad that the building as is will fit in the space. I think um, it is a big number to swallow, but if we had to start over from scratch and have a one million dollar expense, um, it'd be a lot worse. So Director Meyerhoff, and I believe you had another question.
Yes, um, Director Dove, I I think you remind me of something when you were speaking about how money's being dispersed. Um, I think and I have that same concern. But it reminded me of how a bank would do it if we if you were to go in as an individual or developer and take out a loan. They go each step and disperse the money rather than to disperse the full three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars all at once. We I think we should break that down with the architect, say, okay, when this is done, then we'll bring it back because to to the board, to let notice done, then we can go in steps until we get to where we think spending should be.
There there the only next phase is the design phase, the redesign phase of the site. That's the three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
It's going to cost three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to.
Redesign the site.
Redesign the site, but that will be done in stages, correct?
No.
Design, no. No, no. We, how how you, you're going to do the environmental study, right?
Correct. It's outside of their contract.
Outside of their contract. Okay. So the three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in this design stage, we already know everything's going to fit that we want.
Yes.
The information I sent you about the uh, recharging of the vehicles here in the next ten years, the state requirement, where will that go in this?
We have the entire area to the south where we have over, we have a large size parking. You see below the operations building where it says storage and overflow parking. That's roughly, I believe, maybe acre, acre and a half of additional storage.
So that area is where the pond was started to work on and stopped?
Not started to work on and stop.
I mean, it started to dig it up, whatever you're doing back there.
No, that that's pond has been there for for multiple years.
I saw a picture on on the internet there that there was a tractor and.
I don't know what year that.
Maybe I confused it with the other one.
But yes, so we we've started with only three ponds, then we went to five, then we went to eight. So depending on what year you were looking at, there may have been some ponds not there that are now there. Now we currently have eight and and now we're looking at moving the ponds to the east and then removing the pond to the south.
So then we'll have to bring in backfill and compact all that and that that estimate will be.
It's included in their cost.
Included in the.
No, I'm sorry, included in the construction costs that we received.
Okay, so I don't really like the idea of having our customers park over in the uh, park park area, the uh, Mission Springs Park.
Now that's only overflow parking. There are spots where it says visitor drop off and parking. Which is no different than the street.
All right.
No different than the street parking that we have currently. Actually, it's a lot more parking and handicapped accessible parking.
And page one oh one does show a little bit better of a description than this slide. And that future development space that Brian mentioned is fifty thousand square feet.
Yeah, it just looks like we're squeezing a lot in there and the decision was made before we even had a go call vote on where it was going to go. So and then I'm concerned because of the last one, the way things happen, I'm concerned with this one being done correctly. So maybe I'm just being overly cautious on everything, but.
When we we had general consensus from the board to move forward with the site, um, we have not voted to approve any construction bids, so.
Um, that's my problem, general consensus. That means that not everybody agreed, some people agreed, three people agreed. I I don't know, I guess.
On Tuesday.
Same as a vote, right?
Well, on Tuesday, we will be voting on this item.
On this item, but not the location where this item was supposed to go. Is this what you're saying? This item is, we're okay in uh, this location at the same time as we're. I guess we are, aren't we? All right, I I'm all for it. I I just.
Uh, Vice President Griffin.
I just I just kind of want to add, just like for clarification. So um, the original contract amount was one point eight million. We've not used all of that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so basically we're asking now because of these changes, twenty percent more, which on some contracts, you would have a contingency of ten percent or something like that. So it's really a little bit in line with a contingency. This is not, we still have money left over from the original contract. This is just adding a little extra because we're doing some extra stuff.
Yes.
On this and um, my recollection is that the last time we did have a discussion regarding the sites and we had options for the different layouts. We did do a general consensus to direct staff to pursue this particular layout at this particular location. So it wasn't necessarily a vote, but it was general consensus to say, yes, this is our best option because we looked at the options for paying for other sites uh, and what that would cost overall. And the general consensus was let's pursue this and we gave direction to staff. And so that's really what they're doing right now is following the board's consensus direction, which I believe four of us were on board with. Um, and then this is just basically a little contingency because we have to make some changes here. Does that seem like a reasonable explanation?
Yes, Vice President.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any further discussion? And any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Alright, thank you. Item fifteen, appointments to board standing committees. Um, President Sewell may appoint members to the district's standing committees. Uh, I just want to say thank you to the four of you. I've been in contact and I am doing my best to try and um, equally distribute everyone to committees. Um, and I'll have that final list on Tuesday for us to go over and approve. Any questions or comments on item fifteen? Any members of the public wishing to speak on item fifteen?
That member of the public has dropped off the zoom.
Oh, thank you, Dorian. Item sixteen, affiliation listing. It is recommended to review, update if necessary, and approve the current board affiliation list. Um, this goes like my comments on fifteen. I will have that on Tuesday for us to review. Do we have any comments or questions on item sixteen? Nope.
It's one.
Director Duff.
Um, is staff able to provide you or the board by Monday with any listings of any, um, I know that it's been discussed, but wastewater specific um, meetings or metropolitan water meetings? Would there be a way that the staff could find out what is available or what is calendared coming up for those two entities?
We we can definitely do that. I know that the first one that comes to mind is actually here local at the end of this month. Uh, Casa is in Palm Springs later this month, which is usually set up for a board type. It's like an aqua, if you will, but for sanitary associations. So that's the easy one. But yeah, we'll we'll add that in CW and CWE as well. And see if there's any others that we can find.
Thank you.
And thank you for that comment. I think um, most of our focus uh, is definitely towards the drinking water side and some additional education for the board members on the wastewater side would be great. Anything further? Moving on to discussion items. Item seventeen, Nancy Wright, regional water reclamation facility update. Do we have a presentation?
We we do. Our uh, construction manager consultant TKE is on the line and Terry is available to give a presentation. Terry?
Thank you, General Manager Macy, President Sewell and members of the board. I will share my screen and we'll go through the update. Is that coming through? Okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so for the month of December, uh, we had some more progress obviously on the treatment plant. Uh, headwork control panels were installed and finalized at uh, both locations there near the headworks and near the main influent. We also had um, the paving, the PCC paving going around the headworks unit itself. Uh, so we're really starting to get the final product and um, the walking areas all complete around all the uh, the major units that have been installed up to date. As part of our previous uh, updates, we had shown some of these columns going in um, that support the uh, fouling air piping so that the fouling air piping has now been installed. Uh, and that piping will take air from uh, the headworks units which are covered and then bring those into a filtration process to minimize any odors coming from the facility. Um, our SP, our air diffusers uh, are still being worked on. We're kind of wrapping up some of those uh, main piping connections in there that uh, bring air to the bubblers in the SPR system. And seismic bracing is being installed on a lot of those pipes as well at the moment. The spreading pond meter and splitter box, uh, we've shown some pictures of this also in the past. Uh, the progress is continuing on that splitter box. Um, there's still some uh, you know, phase construction going on there as well as all of our effluent piping coming out of those splitter boxes. Uh, how they've now been completed and are now extending it to the uh, the pond areas. And speaking of the pond, so pond one was done. Um, it's shown on a previous one. This is now pond two. It's kind of rounding into shape. You can see some of the walls uh, really developing well. And so they're they're getting close to the completion of the grading work on pond two. Um, also in pond two, the uh, influent pipe that brings that water from the spreader box uh, has been completed and shown on the right side of the picture there. Uh, there'll be some more riprap and things that go around the bottom of that uh, as we move into the future. Um, around the site, we've uh, got some drainage protection features that are being installed. There's a number of B ditches and um, some of the uh, the site protection for uh, like runoff and erosion, the the green spray that they put down on the the right picture there. So um, that's all being installed. And then um, also throughout the site, we've got like some catch basins, another uh, storm drain piping that is uh, currently being installed and worked on um, throughout, you know, various areas of the site to minimize any uh, offsite water that would uh, you know, come through the site. We've also got a lot of pictures, you know, coming in here through uh, some of the flat work that's being done, which is in between the SPR tanks and the headworks and also the operations building itself. Um, a lot of these are just like your housekeeping pads and uh, just the areas that really can I make it look like a finalized site. Kind of see here, this is really starting to come around. It looks like it's uh, almost finished as you walk around the outside of the building there. On the inside of the building, we have still a lot of electrical work going on. Um, as you can see, uh, quite a bit of electrical wiring still being installed. There's, you know, still a number of uh, things to complete on the inside as far as that electrical wiring goes. So there'll be some more progress uh, on the next one, but they are getting much closer to getting that finished up on the inside there. Um, we've also got a lot of the finish work going on. We had the hot water heater installed as well as um, some of the restroom facilities and plumbing. Uh, sinks are installed, all the tiles installed in the restrooms. So there's progress going on there. Um, throughout the hallways and the the internal parts of the building, we've got um, your your doorways are, you know, all complete and installed. You've got your casings in, um, you get your baseboards and tile on the floor. So uh, a lot of good progress. Uh, all the cabinets are complete in there as well as the countertops installed and everything. So uh, getting close to finishing up the inside of the building. And when we moved to conveyance line, uh, the conveyance line has been completed uh, through the end of Dylan at this point. Uh, the contractor did put a major focus on uh, getting a lot of the temporary asphalt uh, rectified and get some permanent asphalt in there. Uh, there will still be a grind and overlay. That's not the the completed asphalt product that we're seeing on the screen. Uh, but they at least did get a final hot mix uh, patch repair so that um, we didn't have any uh, further complaints from the city as far as uh, deficiencies with the cold mixed asphalt that was installed temporarily. For our funding and permitting updates, uh, for phase one, the treatment plant, uh, the FBA was again submitted in uh, May of twenty-two and approved uh, in June of twenty-three. We're working currently on an agreement amendment, which we have ready to submit. Um, but we are waiting for some of these other things to kind of move through so we don't muddy the waters with those, um, since that the agreement is a smaller amount. As far as the reimbursement request, uh, we're still um, awaiting the final payment for Q two, uh, the additional backup that the state requested back in December was already provided. So we're just awaiting the final uh, approval on that. Q three is uh, the invoice there is ready to submit. Uh, once we receive the approval on Q two, we will immediately submit Q three and make sure that there's no uh, changes required to that uh, that come from the Q two process. And then we're also working on the Q four invoice um, right now. And then, you know, follow the same procedures there once Q three is approved. Uh, for the waste discharge permit, uh, we still are working on the monitoring well number three. The easement acquisition documents are complete. There were some minor modifications that we had to make on those. So that will be brought to the board at uh, in February. And then uh, similarly, under that same uh, permit, we are working on the sampling well, uh, that's with the private uh, property owner that um, access is being granted by the property owner. He's a willing participant and we're just finalizing the agreement there. Uh, the Q four update that needs to be sent to the regional water quality control board is just about complete and will be going in next week. Uh, for phase two on the conveyance line, uh, we're still waiting for the uh, FBA approval, uh, was submitted back in May of twenty-three. Uh, the regional water quality control board expects to approve that or had expected to approve that by December thirty-first. Um, they have not approved that as of yet, so um, that is currently delayed on their side. And um, as some previous requests from the board, um, you know, I think Director Dove had asked us to be the squeaky wheel. I just wanted to um, relay some of the the items that um, we are being a squeaky wheel. Um, we we have had thirty points of contact with the board over the last seven months uh, regarding this uh, item or element. So uh, we are contacting them at least once a week and trying to uh, convey the urgency to, you know, get this approved and we'll continue to do so. Um, you know, we are consultants, so I don't know how much they uh, value our opinion sometimes, but uh, we'll we'll continue to be this squeaky wheel until we get this approved. Uh, just to put it in relation, though, the uh, FBA process for phase one did take uh, twelve plus months and right now we're sitting at about eight. So um, if we can get that uh, wrapped up here, in the next month or two, we will be a little bit ahead of schedule from uh, the phase one. With that, I will open it up for questions.
Alright. Do we have any questions, uh, Director Dove?
Thank you and thank you for the update. I appreciate um, the details, Mr. Runner. Um, couple of questions, i- in if you could go back to the slide um, showing the timeline for the the state grant approval processes. Thank you so much. I understand your concern and not wanting to muddy up what they have, but I think given the immense delays that they have in processing, I'm not so sure we should be waiting to submit the completed invoices for quarter three. We can always add anything that's changed in quarter two to quarter four invoicing unless there's some sort of um, reasoning based on experience dealing with the state or they have told us not to. I'm not so sure we should continue to not pile on. I kind of think maybe they need to see just how much money we have out there waiting for them to give us. And maybe getting getting the quarter three invoices sent and not waiting might be the better step. I would ask that you please talk to staff about those options and and whether or not. Those options and, and whether or not the board needs to get involved in making phone calls or sending emails in assistance to the general manager. If that's something we need to start doing. We are so far into this project and we have only received the first invoice and it wasn't even paid in full. So we have to, to. Do something, right? Um, so whatever we as a board need to do to assist you as our contractor or whatever something can do, please. Open those communications with our staff so that we can. Write letters if necessary, send emails if necessary. As my fellow board members know, I have no problem walking up to someone shaking their hand and saying, show me the money. So if that's what we have to start doing, I'm happy to help. Um, but we are in a position where pretty soon. We, we don't want to have to have additional delays because they are not getting us the, the payments that we have submitted. So I'm just putting out there that I don't know it's such a great idea to withhold the invoicing that we've already paid everyone on. It may be where we need to start showing them, look at the millions of dollars we have out there waiting for you guys to approve. What, what you've been given already. Um, again, I'm not an expert on dealing with them specifically. But I just wanted to share, um, my concerns in regards to. That process and, and give that as an idea to try and help them understand. That we aren't getting to hold on to the project and wait for them to do it. We're having to pay and wait for them. To come back after the fact. So. Maybe it's that we need to pile on a little bit. I don't know, but thank you for everything and for the updates.
Vice President Griffin?
I kind of have to echo, uh, Director Duff and, and. One of the things I see is, so twenty twenty-three, uh, Q two invoice, additional backup submitted. And I know we've done this in the past where something gets submitted and they come back and say, well, we need additional stuff. So i- if we're waiting to submit these, then we're really just delaying it even further because. If we wait two months and then they say, no, we need more backup and now we have to send that. We've delayed it two more months than we need to. So if, unless there is some reason to not submit this stuff. I would say the minute it's ready, send it in there. So that would be my direction to staff.
Thank you, Vice President.
Director Martin? Director Meyerhoff?
Yes, I, I, I agree with Director Duff and Griffin. As we learned in our training a long time ago, I forgot where it was exactly, maybe. That. A lot of the water agencies have gone bankrupt waiting on money from the state. And it, it concerns me that we are still waiting on more money. And yet. The last agenda item that we finished up with and we are spending money for critical service center. And I, I just don't want us to get into a jam. We really, if it's my own business, I wouldn't be doing it this way. I mean, I have to go along with the state, but I wouldn't be starting another project without finishing, getting the money for this project. Just because we need a cushion there. So that, that's where I'm at with all this. And please continue to. Do what you can with the state and what you can with the funding that you have to can make the project. Continue to move along. The, uh, what was the timeline again on the Dylan, uh, repaving of the road?
Which one?
The, the, the final, the final paving on Dylan.
Um, final paving, I don't have a timeline on when they're going to be doing the overlay yet. That hasn't come through on the contractor's. Um, schedule update. We still do have. Um, probably a month and a half to two months of piping to work on a little morongo. So. Uh, I would say, uh, you know, in the March to April area.
But we have put the, we have put permanent pavement down versus a temporary cold patch. Along the areas that we have disturbed. So what he's referencing is, once we get that completed, our encroachment permit requires us to pave the entire lane. Not just the area where we disturbed. So.
Right. I, I hope so because it's, it's quite the ride. You know, especially a little car got there. I can really feel it and I know other citizens are so.
Yeah, the problem is our side is too flat. What we've disturbed is flat and the other side has alligator cracking and all the other things and he pavement and that's the, that's unfortunate.
Or it was better before our site.
Before we flattened it yet.
It went, it went down.
I don't mean to be.
A half inch or whatever.
Really what situation is.
Perhaps, uh, General Manager, uh, General. Well, you haven't signed that contract yet, have you?
I've signed my side. I've signed my side.
All right. I'll go along with it here. All right. General Manager Macy, my question, my, my. Request of you and your staff. Is to put it out there on social media. A little something as to why. It, it won't, why, why it hasn't been done, where, how long it'll be.
The timeframe.
Our apologies for the inconvenience of the rough ride.
We've been able to work with the contractor and accelerating other portions of the pavement restoration. We'll work with them, uh, based on the report we just received. Uh, waiting to see where a little more going on the other side of the wash, if you will, trying to complete the section along Palm Drive and things like that. We'll reach out to the contractor and see if we can't do some things. And when we do find those answers, we'll continue to, uh, to, uh, inform the public through social media.
Sure. Just a little something to let them know that we are aware of it and we're working on it. All right. Thank you.
And I have nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Renner for the presentation. Oh, uh, Director Duff?
I'm so sorry. I had written something down and I got sidetracked talking about the money. Um, you had mentioned that there were some stormwater gutters that were being put in. I just have a question in general. Where is that water being moved to? Just off our property or is it? Potentially being stored somewhere that we could potentially put into our system? Just curious.
Uh, most of that stormwater that is falling on the site is stored in, uh, some local areas along the, within the site. If it's, uh, you know, major stormwater that's running from the offsite. Uh, through the property, that's not being stormed. That's our store that's being conveyed, uh, through the property and off.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So we'll, we have our own stormwater detention specifically for our site, but also containment. So we don't have any spills that go off our site, almost like an industrial permit that we have for Horden, similar thing to the right facility. And is there anything that you'd like to add to that? Did I get that right? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We just, we've, we've had a lot since Storm Hillary. We've had a lot of community discussion regarding. What can we do with the stormwater that we get, although it's not consistent and although it's small, what could we possibly do with it? And when I saw those gutters, my mind went with our, our fellow neighbors and I just was curious what we were doing with it. So. Thank you for that.
Terry, could you go back to the photo where you were showing the green being painted? Cause that showed, that shows the gutter that's controlling the runoff from our site specifically and then. Basically diverting everything to around to our detention pound. So. It all is staying on site. It's just the storm. Yeah. We're keeping it in our basin. It's not going off the site. Some of it's to control the onsite flow and some of it's. Around the stormwater as well. That's the good picture. Thank you.
Anything further? You're fine. Thank you, Terry.
All right. Thank you.
Item eighteen, critical services center and administration building update. I know we covered a lot in item fourteen. Do we have?
There is nothing on item eighteen this month.
Okay. Moving on. And I'm sorry, Dory, we're still public lists?
That is correct.
Item nineteen, MSWD strategic planning update.
Uh, this is simply a line item to allow the board to give us additional direction in addition to what we received. Uh, from the workshop on Tuesday. So if there's any, uh, comments that the board would like to share with us to. Upgrade or to change or to modify any of the goals, any of the vision, those types of things, please let us know.
Uh, Director Martin, anything? Director Meyerhoff? Director Duff? All right, um. I appreciate the workshop and if you have any comments, we can go over them on Tuesday. Thank you. Um, consent agenda will cover item twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. I know there's going to be a brief discussion on item twenty-two. But do we have any one that would like to pull anything from the approval of minutes or the register of demands to discuss today? Director Duff?
Register of demands, please.
All right, go ahead.
Um, I just have a couple of questions actually, um. Let me find them here. I'm sorry. Um. Okay, Babcock, Babcock Laboratories, uh, we made a payment. For one of our, um, cultivation manufacturing businesses. And I'm just wondering, is that something that's going to transfer back to them for reimbursement?
Yes, that'd be a reimbursement item.
Thank you. And then there were, um. I don't know how, they say line item and it starts with a PR, which I hadn't seen before, but it says PR one, two, zero, one, two, three. And it listed, I believe, uh, four of them and it only said employees. And then it ended with a fairly large deduction or it might be being put back in. I'm just a little confused as to what that was. It was a, a negative seven thousand five hundred. But there was four line items. So I was just trying to understand more specifically what that was.
Uh, Arturo will be able to explain that.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um. General Manager Macy, uh, Director Duff, uh, those first two items are the, uh, the, uh, check for salaries. Uh, for the two, uh, people that actually get checks. Um, the last, uh, item in there, it is a correction on some payroll items, uh, and they come out as employee. Uh, it was just a paper item, um, but I can bring my, uh, more information to your view, I prefer.
No, that, that clarifies it. So it was just correct being a, a payroll mistake or.
Correct.
Thing of that nature.
And I have requested that a accounting come up with a process to, uh, start, uh, naming conventional items like that. Uh, consistently throughout. So then by the next one, you're going to start seeing the consistency throughout some of those, uh, items.
Awesome. Thank you. That'll really be helpful. So we don't have to bother you with the little detail questions. I mean, then I don't, I think I'm familiar with Unidata maintenance. Are they under contract with us? Is it a, is it a? When does that come up for renewal?
That is the, uh, our, uh, software or finance software, uh, that we're still using. That is the consultant and the developer that continues to make changes as we. Need it. Um, this is their invoice, uh, on a monthly basis until we basically move on to something else.
Okay.
Um, and it is basically on a monthly basis. Every day we're pretty much on a, uh, email, phone call, trying to fix some stuff with a recording or presentation. Uh, right now we're making a lot of changes with payroll for the new laws that came in to affect and the new payroll rates. So that's primarily the, a lot of the back and forth.
I'm just trying to keep straight all of the, the different, um, data source contracts that we have and, and we just had signed the new one with the, with the new. Company. So I was just trying to make sure I was able to, to keep all of that straight. Thank you for those clarification. And again, great job. Thank you so much.
And interim general, general manager, did you want to go over item twenty-two?
Uh, yes, I did. Ask, uh, Eric Weck, our manager, engineering manager, just to briefly touch on, uh, the Rancho Descanso item. Eric?
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Item twenty-two in the consent agenda pertains to the execution. Of the public water and sewer systems construction agreements. And water and sewer bonding agreement for the Rancho Descanso tract thirty-eight two hundred. Which is a residential development project. Uh, this agenda item requests that the, uh, general manager execute and do all things necessary to complete the agreements. Now originally in November of twenty twenty-three. The board approved the water and sewer systems construction and bonding agreements with GHA Descanso. However, due, due to insurance limitations with GHA Rancho Descanso. The parent company, GHA Enterprises, has elected to listed, has elected to be listed as the official developer. To meet the insurance, the needed insurance requirements, which will replace the original company of GHA Rancho Descanso. Uh, this is a minor formality issue and has no effect on the current status of the project. Uh, are there any questions?
So just a housekeeping, changing the name?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions on that? Thank you, Eric. And anything further on the consent agenda? Any members of the public? I think we can see everyone now. Um, moving on to item twenty-three, directors' reports. Does anyone want to give the reports today or Tuesday?
Or today and another one on Tuesday? The time for the agenda item.
All, uh.
No, not tonight, nothing.
We'll go on Tuesday. Um, item twenty-four, general manager's report. We have the finance report and public affairs. Will we do either those today?
Uh, knowing that we're getting close to five o'clock and trying to divide up the time, we, we can do. The finance report is actually the mid-year, which we've already given. Um, the public affairs we can give on Monday to try to spread out the load. So Monday it will be.
Tuesday.
Excuse me, Tuesday. Yes, thank you. Holiday.
Item twenty-five, district council comments?
Um, we won't have a closed session today and I don't think we'll have on, on Tuesday either.
Thank you. Twenty-six, director's comments. Director Martin?
Yeah, I just want to compliment staff for all the work, uh, that. If there's ever a, a, a document that, uh. That gives the. Folks an idea of how much work staff does is just take a look at this agenda. Staff has done a really remarkable job and I really appreciate it.
Director Meyerhoff?
I guess I got that mixed up again. I've done that before. Congratulations, Mr. Macy.
Thank you. I wasn't here to hear it, but I'm, we'll see what happens.
Maybe I shouldn't have said anything.
On Tuesday.
Should have kept you in suspense. You, you know, you're already there.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Director Duff?
I also want to thank staff for their great work on this very complicated, uh, agenda this month. It's quite a lot of housekeeping that needed to be done and I'm, I'm just very grateful that. The staff is diving into those things and, and no longer saying because it's how it's always been done, but instead going, why are we doing this and? Are we really doing this and should we be doing this? And I appreciate you guys asking those questions of yourselves. And it makes our job so much easier. So I just want to say thank you and, uh, that we are very appreciative for those very obvious changes.
Vice President Griffin?
I usually wait till Tuesday, but I do want to say this. Um, I, I think when I looked at this agenda and the work that was put into it, it's, it's a fantastic job. And given that this is the first meeting of the new year, I am hopeful. Uh, it looks like we are off to a, a, a great start and so, um. I'm real happy about this. Um, I actually smiled.
All right. And I just have, uh. To echo those comments, uh, thank you to staff. Um. I went back and looked at last year's agendas and, uh, this tied. For the most items in one agenda. So hopefully I didn't make too many hiccups on my first, uh, meeting, but, um. I appreciated all the board's questions and involvement and looking forward to a fun year. Thank you. And seeing that we have no, um. Closed session, I adjourn the meeting. It's four forty-seven.